The 2025-2026 budget. Mrs. May has the floor.
Okay. So, budget session number four, a review of expenditures and revenues, a little bit closer than we did last budget session. Okay, so for the agenda tonight, a review of expenses, just a discussion about federal grants, review of revenue, what a contingent budget would look like, closing the budget gap, reserve usage, and then finally talking about the propositions that will be on the ballot. So when we look at the expenditure review, we've kind of gone through this a couple of times now, looking back at the 22-23 actual expenditures, as well as the current 24-25 adopted expenditures, as well as the anticipated expenditures for next school year. So overall, not a lot, a ton of changes from last week to this week. We will see later on that the budget gap is smaller. So it's now down to 1.25 million-ish at a 0% tax levy increase, all the way up to about 800,000 budget gap if we went to the tax cap. So again, these expenditures break out separate propositions. So we'll talk about that again a little bit later as well. But these do not include our bus purchases, any transportation or buildings and grounds equipment that would be purchased with the capital reserve, that would be that second proposition. So overall, again, not a ton of changes, but the budget gap is a little bit smaller. And a majority of that was related to, you know, an expenditure budget is based on estimates for next school year. So when we look at all of our 600 budget lines that we have that make up the total $40 million expenditures for next year, we build in some buffer because we don't know, there could be some expenses that come up next year that we weren't planning for, that we need to be able to spend. That buffer has been dropped down to try and eliminate that budget gap as much as possible.
Yeah, so just as a reminder for anyone who's watching at home, this is Mrs. May's first budget with Eden School District. And what she's done over the last several weeks is taken a really deep dive and a long look at our expenditures across time. So when she says there's some of the 600 lines that go into our budget have been reduced, the question could be why weren't they was reduced to begin with? It's because it takes time to learn what is a fair estimate of an expenditure. And that's essentially what she's done to get us to where we are today.
Okay, so this slide is kind of more of an FYI for federal funding. There's been a lot of talk in the news about the disbanding of the Department of Education and what that may mean for school districts. So for federal grants, the district, Eden, does receive grants related to Title I, Title II, Title IV, as well as IDEA 611 and 619. So IDEA stands for Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. Essentially, our special education student grants. So in total, we received about 535,000. That's for the current year grant allocation. Schools have been told that even though the Department of Education no longer exists, these grants will be overseen and managed by a different department of the federal government. So the plan is to just not really change anything and to assume that those funds will be there for next school year.
So just another example of how school districts are forced to budget in a very different way than most other folks in society. And we rely on this federal funding primarily for salaries. Some of those funds are considered pass-through and they come to us and we pass them through to entities that service some of our most needy children. And as Mrs. May pointed out, we've been advised at this point that the funding will be maintained. But as we know, things are changing at a fast and furious pace. So we thought it important that the board be aware that over a half a million dollars of our budget is reliant on those funds from the federal government. And should those go away for some reason, we will have to retool and rethink our budget to make sure that we can cover all that we've covered with that half a million dollars historically. So just a reminder, turn your microphone on because we are being live streamed and recorded. It's okay if you don't mind asking that question again. Well, that's a very important question. And what we're being advised at this point is the Department of Education more likely than not will not be overseeing the funding. The funding will continue, but a different government entity will be overseeing that.
Okay, so if we look at the revenue side of the budget, again, not much has changed since last week's budget presentation. A small increase to miscellaneous revenue based on actual revenue that we are receiving this school year. So again, a very small increase. So the total revenue is 38.8 million. The one thing I did want to note on this slide, since we had talked about on the previous slide, federal grants, the federal aid listed here isn't related to federal grants or anything. It is our Medicaid reimbursement from the federal government related to Medicaid services that some of our students receive. So just a reimbursement of those.
So let's take a quick look at this at a little deeper level. So our state aid is going up by 1.7 million, about 5%, right? That's in the governor's budget. That's in the governor's plan. As we talked about last time, the House and the Senate have their plan. And now is the time when the two houses and the governor negotiate and come out with the final budget, which is due by April 1st. We are not expecting it by April 1st. We're certainly expecting it before you are asked to adopt the budget on April 22nd. Our 5% increase is 3% more than most schools in the state received in the governor's budget. She went with a minimum of a 2% increase. And then our increase was based on updated metrics in terms of our impoverished stakeholders and a couple of other changes to the foundation aid formula. The Senate, I believe I shared last time, and maybe both, the Senate and the House, both houses want that minimum to go up to 3%. And we don't know if that happens, if it'll also positively affect us at 5%. You know, it would be great if we went to 7%. We wouldn't be having too many hard conversations on. But I also want to draw your attention to area county sales tax. We are projecting 1.9 million in revenue from sales tax. This is probably one of the trickier projections in our budget and certainly the trickiest when it comes to sales tax based on, you know, the things that are going on nationally and internationally. Our area certainly benefits from Canadian shoppers. And, you know, they pay our sales tax. So if that goes away, I would anticipate that number dropping as well.
Okay, so just a little talk about what would it look like? And what would it mean if the district had to adopt a contingent budget? So if the vote should go out in May and fails, the board has two options. They could go out for a revote in June, which they could propose to the district voters, the same budget or revised budget. Or they could at that point adopt a contingent budget. If the revote should fail in June, the district must adopt a contingent budget at that point. So what does a contingent budget mean? What would it look like? So a contingent budget tells districts that you cannot increase the tax levy. So taxpayers technically don't pay anymore as a total to the school district. However, individual tax bills could increase or decrease depending on the overall assessments, the distribution of assessments in each town, so on and so forth, things that are out of the control of the district. So while the tax levy in total wouldn't change, individual tax bills could change. It would eliminate equipment purchases for next school year. So on the first slide where we had total equipment purchases for next year, that would be zero. We would have to eliminate the capital outlay project. So that's the $100,000 capital project that Mr. Sitzman reported on last budget session or last meeting, which is the $100,000 project at Eden Elementary. That would no longer be allowed to continue. We would not be allowed to allow outside agencies to use our facilities at a free basis. So we would have to charge them for using our facilities. Would eliminate any school bus purchases and it would also eliminate other non-contingent expenditures in order to make sure that we stay at a 0% tax levy increase.
Just can you clarify, when you say outside agencies, are you talking anybody not affiliated with the school? Or would that be like town affiliated clubs and things like that?
It would be anyone who was not a district employee.
Wow, okay.
So Town Rec, we don't charge. There would be significant fees. Anyone that wants to use any part of our facility would have to pay.
That's not an us thing. That's a state mandate.
That's a state mandate, absolutely.
Okay, so this is another repeat slide from previous budget discussions. So this is the difference, the cumulative difference between what the tax levy could have been if the district had gone to the tax cap since the inception in the 2012-2013 school year versus what the actual tax levy was in each individual year. The cumulative difference amounts to 1.9 million. So again, this is what the Board of Education has chosen to keep in our taxpayers' pockets by maintaining financial stability of the school district and understanding our operational needs while also understanding the fiscal management of our taxpayers.
Frankie, how often? I've been on the board, was it nine or 10 years now? It's nine or 10th budget. How often have we come out below what was acceptable? So I think once since I've been on the board, we tried to exceed with a supermajority and that was voted down. And then how often have we gone in less? I think it's almost every time.
It's almost every time. I'd have to look back at the exact numbers. But originally, when the tax cap inception, I want to believe the first three or four years, it was at the cap or near it. And then every year since then has been less than the cap.
Okay, so I guess my point is, so we have almost always, the board and all of us have advocated for going out below what the maximum allowed.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so this is just the model showing our total revenue, our total expenditures, and then our tax levy at each iteration from a 0% increase all the way up to the tax cap of 2.58 with the budget gap at each iteration. So again, with the 0% increase, we're at about 1.25 million budget gap, all the way up to the tax cap at about 833,000. So what this is showing is if even if we go to the tax gap, we still have about 833,000 of a budget gap that we would have to meet. When we look at reserve usage, this is another repeat slide. So this is just the 1,640,000 that is built into the revenue side of the budget for our workers' comp, our unemployment, our ERS and TRS. This is not related to Proposition 2, which would be the capital reserve for purchase of buses, transportation and buildings and grounds equipment, which we'll talk about later. Okay, and then lastly, just the propositions that would be on the ballot in May. So Proposition 1 would be our general fund expenditure budget of 40,760,000. It would include the capital outlay of $100,000. And then it would also include whatever tax levy increase the board feels comfortable going out at. And then Proposition 2 would be the use of capital reserve funds for our bus purchases, our transportation and buildings and grounds equipment for a total of 1,182,000. This proposition is using all of reserves to pay for those expenditures. So there is no taxpayer impact.
So what the governor has established is that after 2027, we can no longer purchase diesel or gas buses. Okay, so a little bit of time, it's 2025. So Proposition Number 2 is designed to purchase the number of buses that we need, maybe one more than we would typically. So we make sure that we have enough quality buses to pick up our children, deliver them safely as we work towards that transition. And remember, we're not going to be the first transitioning to a zero emission bus. We are probably going to be the caboose purposely. The Senate has a proposal in their budget presentation to delay that 2027, two years to 2029. Currently, by 2035, the entire fleet has to be zero emission. That's 10 years away. We are probably three or four weeks away from getting our final report from Wendell, who is doing the infrastructure study on what we need to do and what it would cost to add charging stations and fire suppression and any updates that we would need to the Transportation Department building. Just for charging stations and fire suppression at 7.4 million dollars. And that's without even touching the building, which would need significant upgrades and expansion. So we are lobbying hard with various organizations to slow this down. Okay, could we go back three slides, please? There we go. So I just want to, board, I just want to talk to you about this a little bit. And I'm going to draw your attention to the orange line about midway through that slide. And that's the levy increase. And you'll see on the furthest left column underneath that yellow rectangle, 0%. So if we don't increase the levy at all, our budget gap currently would be 1.2 million dollars. And then as we make our way to the right, if you prefer a levy at 2%, we'd have a $927,000 budget gap, 2.25, 887, 2.5, 847. And if we go to the allowable tax cap of 2.58, our budget gap is 833,000. Now, I will tell you that in one time in our time together, we did have a 0% budget. That even though our financial advisors cringe when we do those things, that was at a time where the federal government sent an awful lot of money to schools. And we were told to buy stuff. Well, how much stuff do we need? We'll buy what we need, but we're not buying stuff just to sit around. There was also the time where our stakeholders approved the capital project that this library was part of. So we had extra funds. We utilized those towards salaries. We only, in the last five years, the only new position that this district added was a school social worker. Very easy to justify that. So we did not increase our staffing based on federal funding. We essentially gave back to the taxpayers and didn't increase taxes. I cannot advise to do that again. Okay? If this board feels we need to go out at 0%, obviously you are the Board of Education. We will heed to your wishes. But we're talking significant and deep cuts to staffing and to programming. That's the only way we can get to 1.2 million. It really is. If we go all the way over to the right, 2.58, that is a reasonable tax cap. There was a year where our tax cap was 7.49%, which is a number we are never going to ask our taxpayers to attempt to afford. I think we went out at 2% that year, right? So left 5.5% on the table because that was the right thing to do. If the flavor is to go out at the tax cap, we still have 833,000 of a gap to fill. And we can do that a number of different ways. But we can't get to those ways until you remind me of what's important to you. And other than Mrs. DeLaPunta, the other board members, you were the board that hired me. And what I heard from you from the beginning and what I listened to in meetings was a very large sense of pride in terms of class size. In one of my first meetings, we talked about adding a teacher at the elementary because there was a bubble of students. And then that teacher would move up so that our class sizes would be maintained. And I can tell you that in our primary building and in our elementary building, we have class sizes between 17 and 19. I think kindergarten might be around 20 at most. I can't remember. Don't quote me on that grade level, though. And if you want me to maintain that, if that's what's important to this community and important to the board, I need to know that. If that's no longer important and we're going out at 0%, that gives me some direction on where to look. I think our class sizes are fantastic right now. If you're asking for my recommendation, we should maintain what's important to us and what was important to you five years ago. But let me hear from you on that.
I mean, I am all for maintaining lower class sizes at the primary elementary level. I think our goal should be to, if anything, if we're reaching financial struggles, to then see that slowly increase as they age up. But I think it's important to give as much differentiated instruction when they're younger and that's much more manageable when the class sizes are manageable. Especially at the kindergarten level, anybody who's ever taught kindergarten, it's
or preschool.
It's not an easy gig. It's, I mean, they're cute, but it's like herding kittens. So you really do need small class sizes to make it work, to give everybody, every kid an opportunity to learn.
Yeah, I 100% agree with that. And especially, I think today, you know, we see a lot more, you know, kids are different than they were 10, 15, 20 years ago. They have a lot more needs. So I think to increase class sizes, especially at those younger grades, would just be harmful.
I agree. Don't not use my mic, but.
There's a small class on that. So when it comes to secondary staffing, it's not as it's not as, it's a little bit more difficult to discuss because as you pointed out, Mrs. Grunder, it also has to do with what courses we're offering, right? And Mr. McDonough and I had a long conversation about that today. And for example, we have two math teachers retiring, right? And we have talked about if we're going to shrink our staff, let's do it through attrition. Because we have really good people here who really care about our students, who really buy into the whole culture of our community. We don't want to lose anybody. And I'll just give you an example. If you came back and said, let's not replace either of those math teachers, it would decimate our math program. We would only be able to offer the basic courses. And I would say that even if we didn't replace, if you told me not to replace one math teacher. Last year, we had a discussion, we had a retirement. We anticipated we might have a couple more this year and we do. So the thought last year is we can, although not an easy person to replace, we can maintain what we offer currently by not replacing one person. But that ship has sailed and I'm going to recommend that we replace both of those math teachers. If we don't replace one, your upper level math courses are gone. Those are some of your smaller classes. You know, when you have an AP Calc class, you may only have five to eight students in it in a school our size. Quite frankly, I worked in one of the largest high schools in Western New York. We had an AP Calc BC class that maybe had 10 or 11 kids in it. And so what I just want to point out too, when you look at the number of students enrolled in certain courses in a district our size, you can't look at just the number of students, right? You need to understand that those students deserve the same opportunities for that challenging level of coursework that a student in a neighboring district that has a lot more students than it does. So you don't want our students to be punished just because of the zip code and where they live. And so sometimes we have to have a tolerance for some smaller classes, particularly at the upper levels. That doesn't mean that we, and this is some of the work we started today, don't have to take a real hard look at where our enrollment is and whether there's some micro adjustments that we can make. Well, actually, we need more than that. But that's as high as I'm going to recommend we go. I would, go ahead.
Sorry. Talking about, you know, your micro shifts, I mean, Jack and Marlene, I think we can, there was a period of time where we did make some pretty significant, unfortunate but necessary cuts to staffing and programming. So I think we've done a lot of hard work even prior to your tenure to try to right-size things. That doesn't mean, like you said, there aren't like small adjustments that we could make at some point, but.
And I always think too, when people talk about staffing, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think now we're hiring a lot more one-to-one aides, classroom aides than we have, say, 10, 15 years ago. I mean, you know, I think that, I'm guessing, I'm assuming, but just based on our monthly meetings, how many we're approving. And I think people forget, they're like, oh, our classes are, you know, our district is getting smaller, but our needs are getting bigger. And I think people forget that. And I think that's something important to keep in mind where, yeah, you know, our numbers might be lower, but the need is greater. So we do have more staff that we need. And I think sometimes people forget that or don't want to acknowledge that. And by people, I mean the public, we know.
I would simply add that the board has consistently come in lower than the cap. We're all taxpayers here. We're all homeowners in Eden. We're, I don't know if we'd say we're proud of raising taxes, but we're proud that it didn't go up as high as we could have. And this year, I don't see a way that we don't go to the cap. I mean, we've gone over the numbers, there's other meetings regarding the budget. We've fine-tuned things. We've cut jobs in years past. We've taken hard looks with all administration at right sizing, combining services, all those sorts of things. And you reach a point where, you know, there's only two ways to move. Either you lower expenses, which we tried to do, or you raise revenue. And this year, I would advocate for going to the 2.58. Other years, I have said, you know, even though I think one year was like two, we can go to two and a quarter. And we said, let's just go out at two, just, you know, to save the taxpayers. But I don't see a way to not go at the 2.58 this year.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's part, part of why we're having this meeting, so we can have, uh, an open discussion, open dialogue as opposed to a business meeting where you're voting on things and it's really not, you know, a, a given, given take like, like we're having right now. My, my hope is that if people aren't watching at home right now, that they, that they watch online, and they hear how committed all of you are to keeping taxes as low as, as possible, but maintaining our class sizes and maintaining our student programming. A, a contingent budget, to be very honest and be very fair, would not impact most of our stakeholders in the community. They wouldn't know a difference. But those who participate in, in the town recreation department certainly are going to. Those who have, uh, family members or who, who teach in the district or work in the district, they're certainly going to feel it. Uh, and, and the bottom line is, your taxes still might go up. So the community needs to tell us through their voting what they support and what they value. And if they value the high quality of education students can get in this district, and they really can, then, then they'll show us when, when they vote. I mean, we're at, we're at between ninety-six and ninety-eight percent, uh, graduation rate. And, and that's an outstanding metric in one of the tops in Western New York. We have, we have students who, who go on to do what they choose to do post-high school, whether it's collegiately or through the world of work or the armed forces or whatever it is. And it's because of the quality education here. It's a lot to be proud of as a, as a community.
Do we know besides the, the summer rec program, how many other town organizations use the school? I'm assuming, um, the one I can think of that's in the winter would be the Eden Wrestling Club, who uses the auxiliary gym. So they would be charged for it. I think, you know, I'm just trying to think of other, other clubs so people can understand the, how, why, you know, it wouldn't just affect those kids who go to, you know, summer rec. You know, there's the, the winter wrestling, and then are there any fall programs or if there's
I think there's also
There's still swim club?
Adult basketball, and I think they do, they used to do volleyball, adult volleyball, I don't know if they still do.
I, anything that's not an Eden Scholastic team.
Yeah, I'm just wondering what other town things, town things there are. What's EAA?
Eden Athletic Association.
Oh, yeah, I'm like, sorry, we didn't have baseball kids.
Lacrosse, we have adult programs, we had, um, winter instructional swim this winter. Adult pickleball, two volleyballs. There's a bunch of our community members that are using it, but they don't realize that.
Yeah, no, I think it's good to have that list because, you know, I think of summer rec, but yeah, that's why I was like, what else is there? But yeah, that's all, that's a lot. That's a lot of stuff.
I mean, as far as the tax cap, I think it's our job as the board to educate, um, our community members out there. Let them know what we have done. I mean, yeah, they see that big book I don't like that we send out at budget time, but really the message is, I've heard great things about our school, and every time I ask people about it, I've heard lots of good things. People have come back that have stayed in our community to, um, raise their children that went to school here because I'm always amazed at how many people stay here, um, because I was not born here and raised here. And that is our job as a board, though, to go out and educate the community and say, here's what, not necessarily what you'll miss, but this is what you're getting. And we're just asking for a little bit over that two percent that we've always asked for to maintain what we have. But we really just need to go out there and, and educate people and then encourage them to ask questions.
Yeah, excellent, excellent comment, and you're going to see a very different, uh, um, book this year. It's a little different, little different flair, much more significant highlights on all the great things that are happening here.
That's been
Well, you got someone with a little bit of style running the show now as opposed to me, so. Let's, um, move one slide forward for me. Okay, so this is, this is reserve usage.
Yep, this would be just with what was presented for the general fund budget. So if we did want to take that budget gap at the tax cap and add that to the one million sixty-four thousand, our total reserve usage for the general fund budget would be one million eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and eight dollars. So again, that would just be bumping up really our ERS and TRS expenditure or usage of reserves. So that's our employee retirement system and our teacher retirement system, employer contributions, um, and that would really just be maxing out the use of that reserve. I guess the one caveat to that is, again, um, once you use your reserve, it's like your savings account. That money is gone and is not available for future use. So we just have to be mindful as we're planning for future years, uh, if we're going to spend more reserves, that money is just not there.
And let's talk about the ERS and the TRS reserve, which you've targeted to, to fill that gap. ERS, uh, is, why don't you explain it? Let's see, what, what's ERS for?
So ERS is our employee retirement system, so think of like our teacher aides, our clerks that are part of our CSEA unit. They're a part of the state pension system, which is the employee retirement system through the New York State local retirement system. So when they retire, they get a pension. The employer pays, um, a percentage of their salaries towards that pension system each year. So next year, it's slated at about thirteen percent, I believe.
And so each year, we are given what the increase is going to be. So, and it's increased every year, it's never gone down. I mean, the, the increases have been more modest recently. But whatever our increase is this year, nine percent, ten percent, whatever it is, we have to either utilize our reserve or our general fund to pay that. It's a bill that comes due every year. And TRS is the same, i- is the same description but for teachers. So teachers, you know, our, our costs or district costs aren't just salary. It's salary, TRS or ERS contributions, it's FICA, uh, and obviously health insurance, which is a huge cost. The district is going to, um, be saddled with an increase of about a quarter million dollars in health insurance costs for next year. And, you know, at about a seven point nine percent increase, which is a good five percent less than what the, what the average is. So we're supposed to be thankful that it's only going up eight percent, but I'm hard, it's hard for me to be thankful about this. So I just point that out because, you know, we're utilizing that reserve for that specific cost, and we're going to have that cost the following year. I agree with that strategy, as you and I have talked about before, to use those, those two reserves to fill the gap. But the other thing we can, we can have is we can have hope, but hope is not a plan. And we can hope that when the, when the final budget comes out, that at the very least, we get what we think we're getting today. And then the hope would really be that we get some more. And then perhaps we can use a little bit less of that reserve and, and, and save that for the following year. Right, but hope is not a plan. You can write that down. So are we, we in agreement? Let's utilize these reserves to, to, to fill that gap. Let's maintain our programming, maintain our staffing at this point. This is just a discussion. You could change your mind between now and April twenty-second for sure.
Yeah, I think so. Um, I mean, it makes sense, and because we don't really, it's not like we have these things to cut, yeah, either.
I would also add that it's not like we're adding a bunch of additional stuff. I mean, really, we're trying to maintain our existing district, and inflation is still above, depending on who you talk to, three percent. And so that's still lower than inflation. And so, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's hard to keep prices and, and expenses below the rate of the cost of everything going up.
Anything else? Want to go to your last slide?
Okay, so next steps in the budget process really is to adopt the property tax report card and adopt the budget. That's about it.
And that, and budget adoption will be April twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
No, that's not the vote. That's where, so we will have another budget presentation. We will have a balanced budget to present to you. We'll explain how we got to that balanced budget, very likely utilizing the reserves that we talked about today. Hopefully with also an increase in, in state revenue. And then you will, as a board, vote or vote to adopt or to not adopt the budget that's present, presented to you. If you don't like the budget that's presented to you, then we'll take a recess and Frankie and I will, will, um, square our way in office and figure out what changes we can make to, to get to a point where you're, where you're satisfied. But our charge as of today is two point five eight percent, utilizing those reserves to, to fill the gap. Right, um, again, so April twenty-second is the next, um, meeting where we'll be, we'll be talking deeply about the budget. It'll be the last time we can change, make any changes to the budget as a board. Once it's adopted, it's adopted. And then, May, when is our budget, our budget hearing?
Uh, May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, we'll have a budget hearing. And as you'll recall, as a board, that's when people tend to show up and, and want to hear about the budget and recommend changes, but it's too late. Changes have to happen by the twenty-second, or they don't happen. We have a budget hearing on, on May
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, and then the vote is on
May
twentieth?
Twentieth this year.
May twentieth? Yes, remember, I don't hear. All right, we're working together. There we go. So May twentieth is the, is the district vote, um, for the budget and also for, uh, the three, three trustee positions that are open.
Mr. Sortisio, can you hear me?
Yes, it is a Tuesday.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a Tu- Tuesday, May twenty-second. It's a statewide, uh, date, uh, except for the big five. So unless you're in, unless you're in a big city, that's when you vote on the school budget.
Oh, sorry, can you go back to the prior slide? I just had a question. About the second, it's a prop to, yeah, um, I'm just curious. What building and grounds equipment, just out of curiosity? Do we know?
It is the cafeteria tables at the middle high school. Okay.
Yeah, so we have, we've taken a really hard look at some of the requests that we got. We've looked at, um, you know, depreciation tables, uh, regarding trucks and front loaders and a whole bunch of other things. We didn't know, really understood what they were, uh, and pushed a lot of those asks uh, further into the future and focused our purchases on, on buses and things that are going to directly positively impact the students' experience.
Kind of what I was curious, out of curiosity, how much, how much is a bus? Do we know?
Less than one point one million dollars, but it's more than a dollar. Two, two hundred
Case I ever want to buy a school bus.
Think about a hundred thousand. No more than that, maybe two hundred thousand.
Maybe in, maybe in NT, they were a hundred thousand, and Eden, we buy a little nicer ones.
Hey Jeff, can you hear me?
Alan, I hope they do. I hope, I hope we have to move it into the auditorium because there's so many people that want to hear how hard we're all working to, to make things affordable for, for them and wonderful for their students. But I'm not going to hold my breath.
We need to let the public know and, yeah, find ways hopefully of
Jeff, wasn't there a, uh, technology reserve at one point? Were you not doing anything for technology this year?
So we are not there is a capital project reserve for technology. We are not going out with a proposition next year, uh, for a technology reserve purchase, mostly because we have the smart schools funding about four hundred and seventy-five thousand that we have to spend, uh, that we're going to work on putting a plan together to purchase some of that technology equipment next year with that funds rather than
Technology will be replaced, but we're using, uh, we're using grant money essentially. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, that concludes our, uh, our board, our board meeting for tonight at six forty-seven. Thank you all for your, for your input and your direction.